Hi, I'm Tatum Skipper and welcome to Real Florida Magazine.
Welcome back here today on the beautiful campus of Florida Panhandle Technical College in another of our series of Meet the Candidates. Here today with Travis Mask who's currently running for the Washington County School Board District 2 seat. That seat currently held by Wayne Saunders, longtime school board member, who has decided not to go forward in this next election cycle, so that seat is up for grabs. Travis, when we come back, is going to explain to us exactly why you should vote for him, talk a little bit about Travis's past, maybe about Washington County in general. At the end of this show, hopefully you'll be a little bit better educated about Travis and about that position so that you can make that decision as an informed voter. We'll be right back. Welcome back. As mentioned, our guest today is Travis Mask. You're currently running for School Board District 2 in Washington County. Thanks for taking the time to visit with us today.
Thank you for having me here, Paul. I really appreciate you.
That position, longtime, has been held by Wayne Saunders.
Yes, sir.
Interestingly, Wayne, for many years, very instrumental right here on this campus, Florida Panhandle Technical College now, used to be Washington Homes Technical Center, what people refer to as the old Vo-Tech. Wayne having his name on the Adult Learning Education Center here on campus. Wayne decided not to run for this upcoming cycle for that position, and so you've stepped forward. We usually start off, Travis, by allowing that candidate to introduce themselves to our audience. Talk a little bit about your family, your history in Washington County, and maybe some of the reasons why you decided to run for this office.
Yes, sir. My name is Travis Mask and I'm a longtime resident here in Washington County. You know, my history goes way back with the Co-ets and the Griffins. Basically, they farmed this community for ages and raised me into that same type of family and the same work ethic that they had. And that's basically why I want to run in this position. I would like to put my work ethic to work the same way Mr. Saunders did. And I've talked to Mr. Saunders after he put out that press release that he wouldn't be running again. And I was interested in continuing on the great works that he did. You know, a great man. He had so many years, and it's no wonder why he had all those years. He was a good man and he stood for what he believed. And he put those morals and characters to work in the school board. And the things that he's accomplished while he's been in school board, it's no wonder why he held that position so long. And never once would you ever think of running against him, or I wouldn't. So when I heard that he was going to bow out and he wasn't going to be seeking a reelection, I said, "Somebody needs to step in and continue the character that Mr. Saunders had when he was in there." And that's where I go and try to do.
Many people would ask, "What qualifies you, Travis, to run for that position?" So if you would, and you're going to have that question a lot, how about addressing that? What do you feel in your background, in your education, in your history, in your character will allow you to do the kind of job that Washington County needs as School Board District 2?
Yes, sir. With me being here all my life, I went to school here all my life. Every bit of the education I had came from Washington County school system. Then when I went over to Chipola and went there, you know, it came there and actually Mr. Saunders's daughter taught me at Chipola. But with that being done, with me having the education I do from Washington County school, I love our community. I've been in the military, I've been around the world, and I came right back here when everything was done because this community is where I was raised. I know how these children, when they're raised here and they're raised in the right way, that they can thrive. And this community means so much to me. And these children and these educators that we have, they're second to none. All our educators, the ones I talk to in the school and stuff, it's not like they're doing it just for a paycheck. And I know they have to make a living, but they love these kids. I've got four kids that's going through the school system. I've got three that's in the Washington County school system and one that's transported to Marianna by the Washington County school bus. He's mentally and physically handicapped and goes to a school in Marianna. But I really, when Mr. Saunders stepped down, I said, "I want to do something for my community also." I've been in leadership positions. I've led mission trips to Mexico, to Kentucky, and different places. I've ran budgets for those. I've done budgets for the church. I've been in the church. I've helped organize the food giveaways. I've done a lot of things for the community and things like that. And I just want to do the same thing there. And I feel like with the background that I have and the love I have for this community, it qualifies me for the position that I'm seeking.
Many times, especially in this series of interviews with candidates, if someone's running for a position, especially if there is an incumbent, we ask, "There's got to be a reason why you're running. There's got to be something you feel could be done better. There's got to be something being done that's wrong that you'd like to prevent." In this case, there will not be an incumbent, so you're not running against anybody.
Right.
What, if anything, do you feel can be done in the Washington County School District to improve that which is that school district?
Yes, sir. Well, as you probably already know, in the last four years, we've become a B school system as a whole. So we've really raised the standard up some. But what I want to see done is I would love to see the handicapped and disabled as they're being transported over to Marianna. We've got 11 students from Washington County that's being transported over to Marianna because we just honestly don't have the facility to take care of them. My son being blind, he has cerebral palsy, a seizure disorder. He's in a wheelchair. He can't eat like a normal child. You have to do everything for him and he has to have pureed food. So I would love to see that type of environment, what they have there in Marianna, come here into Washington County. Let them funds that they get for those children, those 11 children that are going to that county, come here. Now, I love the school he goes to and they're great educators too, and they love my child. But the money that we're sending over there, you know, every year they do a count of the students, and I believe the acronym for it is the FTE. And they count those children and according to what the county is for each one of those children, we get funds from the state that allows us to continue on what we're doing in the school system. Those 11 kids are funded at a higher level because they need adaptive equipment. They've got things they need that specially equipment, that's what I mean by adaptive equipment, that typical students that run the everyday school don't need. And I would like to see that come into effect here in Washington County.
Not unlike our surrounding counties, especially Jackson and Holmes, only about a third of the people in Washington County pay ad valorem taxes. That's because only about a third of the people own property. Many are renters in situations where they're not paying ad valorem taxes. Obviously, in, just as in all counties in Florida, most of the monies to support the school system typically come from the county. The state and federal government will augment those numbers, but the more that you take from the state, the more beholden you are to their rules and regulations-
Exactly.
...and stipulations. That said, what if anything can we do to possibly raise more monies so that, number one, we're not at the beck and call of the state, that we don't have to jump through all of their hoops? And before you answer that question, let me point out that we did try here in Washington County to, on a referendum, to pass a half-cent sales tax in Washington County that would have generated quite a bit of money to do just that. Since the voters said no to that half-cent sales tax, and obviously everybody already complains about being taxed too much as it is, what if anything can we do to have more disposable income to be able to make those changes, one of which could very well be to be able to handle those children that are currently being bused out of county?
Yes, sir. One of the things with being a minister in a church, running mission trips here and there, is we have to be able to raise the funds to be able to go on them trips. It just don't rain down, it don't grow on a tree, and we got to use the resources that we have at hand. And one thing that we got in the school system is we have children. And you can take those children, you can have them create projects, build things, make things. You know, Panama City and Bay County do the Mask Gala Parade and they auction off these masks and stuff. Why can't we have our kids create programs, create artworks, auction them off, and allow our kids to be a productive member of their own education?
Wild guess, what kind of monies could be raised through that kind of process? Have you given a bet?
I've seen many, many different ways that that could work. We, for instance, we've had car washes before. You get somebody that comes in a car wash and they just love the calls, and the kids are the ones out doing it. And they'll come in there and we'll do it by donation only. I've had people come up with $500 donations just to get their car washed. So you get a child, you get these children, and they pour their heart into this program. You're going to have the businesses, you're going to have the parents. They're going to really reach out to show these kids the appreciation that they did, the hard work that they put into this. And I think with the amount of kids we have, you know, you may not have to have every single child do it, but have a few do it. And I think it may not raise the same amount of funds as that one cent or half-cent sales tax would, but it's going to raise more. Something's better than nothing.
Just recently, the Florida State Legislature granted $26 million to Washington County to be able to build the new Kate Smith Elementary School. The last bit of that still unfunded, but I dare say that the state is going to approve a project and allow it to be built to this point and then not fund that last portion. But nonetheless, Washington County arguably did get a kiss. We got $26-plus million for Kate Smith Elementary School. Right about the same time, we got $9.2 million for a new courthouse here in Washington County. That said, what long-term goals, what long-term projects do you see the Washington County educational system, the Washington County School Board in this case? What do you feel are the next, is the next one or multiple projects that the school board should look at and be able to fund moving forward as far as what our needs are in Washington County?
Well, one of the needs that I've seen so far is we're going to need a new elementary school in Vernon. That's going to be a need. You know, they've grown out, they've expanded, but at some point or time, there's going to have to be growth there. With these kids that I'm wanting to bring from Marianna back to Chipley, or to Washington County, I should say, we're going to have to figure out a place to put them, which I have an idea already, a decent place that would be to put them. If you pull up to Kate Smith Elementary School, to that carport that's there, right in front of you when you pull up there is a building that's not nearly as old as the rest of them. And it's a newer building, and it would serve as a great classroom. Now, we would bus the kids from Vernon up to Chipley to do that. And right now, they're already busing them from Vernon to Chipley and they're meeting there at Herald Square, and they transfer the kids over and they transport them on over to Marianna. But if we could just get them there to the old Kate Smith Elementary School, or what will be the old, into that classroom setting, set up all their adaptive equipment for their speech therapy, their vision therapy, their speech, physical, vision, all the different therapies that they're going to need to make that thrive, that one program would work right there.
Looking at that sitting school board as it sits today, we see a spirit of cooperation. We see good partnerships. We see a spirit of teamwork. And frankly, we don't see that in the county commission. And we don't have a franchise on it here in Washington County. We see it all around us. But what I'm getting at is that there already seems to be that cooperative spirit, that teamwork existing on that board. What do you feel that you bring to the table as, in this case, that fifth member? And frankly, there are going to be, the potential of another seat being changed, Milton Brown with a challenger this time as well. What do you feel coming in as, in this case, the fifth member of that board? What do you bring to the table to enhance that spirit of cooperation and that teamwork? And what do you feel your skill sets are that you bring to the table that will make you a productive school board member and make that body as a whole more productive?
Well, I tend to get along with people very well. I love people, and each member that's on that board today, Ms. Susan Roberts, Milton Brown, Van Brock, Terry Ellis, I know each and every one of them. They're great people, each one of them. You see what they've already done. Their experience speaks for itself when they've raised the system up to a B school where it was at the D level. They've worked and they've done something right. So as things start going right, you start melding together and you start working together. Many of them has worked. Ms. Roberts was at the elementary school as a guidance counselor whenever I was going. And you've never seen nobody love on the kids like she did. Mia Milton, we're buddies, we're friends. And even his competitor, we went to school together and we know each other. And I can get along with anybody. We can get together, we can make things. If you and I were talking, and we're friends, if you had an opinion on one thing and I didn't agree with your opinion, that's what makes the world go round. If everybody had the same opinion, we would never get nowhere. So we've all got to understand, we've got difference of opinions, but we can work together with that and we can still be friends. We can still be colleagues. We can still go fishing on the weekends. So we have to get along. These kids are looking for people. When I went to school, the people that meant the most in my life, that molded me, besides my mom, my dad, and my immediate family, are my educators. They're the ones that meant the most to me. And as Mr. Saunders even, he's been on this board so long that he means the world to me. Them educators, and I could name five of them off the top of my head, they meant something to me. They molded my life. When I was young, I said, "Man, I just want to be just like them when I grow up." And that's what I want our education program to be. Let it be an example to what those kids need when they grow up. Because there are kids that don't have the parents that teach them that right and wrong. And the only good example they get is our educators.
We face a lot of challenges in today's world. The old Chinese curse, "May you live in interesting times," is definitely staring us dead in the face.
Yes, sir.
I am not going to address some of the more volatile issues in our conversation. There's really no need. When you start talking about transgender issues, and right now, school systems, public school systems are having to deal with those insofar as the use of bathrooms and sports facilities. So let's don't even go there. How about that?
No, let's don't.
However, we do face other issues which may be more approachable and easily discussed. One of them is school uniforms.
Yes, sir.
Here over the last few years, that's one situation or issue with, around which the school board has danced. A lot of people don't want uniforms, others feel that they'll be beneficial. You don't have to answer if you don't want to, but what's your personal opinion about school uniforms?
I have mixed feelings on that. One being that if you get the kids in uniformity, the children that cannot afford to have the same kind of clothes, the same brand clothes, or even holes in their clothes, they have to come to school dressed in what they can get, it eliminates them being bullied by the kids that can't afford the better stuff. In that aspect, I agree. In another aspect, if they can't afford the clothes that are nice, how are they going to afford a school uniform? So we're in a catch-22 here. How do you have them try to afford a uniform? They can't even afford regular clothes when they go to Walmart or they go to one of these other retail stores to buy. If they can't afford regular clothes and their shoes are falling apart, can't expect them to get a uniform.
Definitely a convoluted and very difficult situation.
It is.
And thanks for your candid remarks. We have a brand-new Kate Smith Elementary School going to be open this fall, 2016. It will be the first class, classes entering that classroom. We're actually going to acquire the fifth grade as well.
Yes, sir.
If we look at the old Kate Smith Elementary School, much of that ready for the bulldozer. As you point out, some of it not so old. First blush opinions, what do you think some of the, you mentioned one of them, which was used for ADA compliant children, or perhaps some with physical and developmental challenges. What other uses possibly could we use some of that real estate, do you think?
Well, you know, we could, I hadn't really gave much thought to it.
And I'm willing to accept that answer. We live, again, in challenging times. We've talked a little bit about the fiscal issues. The school board position is a nonpartisan position, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
However, let's talk a little bit about maybe which way you lean, more liberal, more conservative. Would you say fiscally that you're more liberal or more conservative?
I'm probably more conservative. Now, I understand, and I like the fact that we're implementing new equipment in teaching our kids. But at the same time, we need to look, there's grants, and I know most of the grants have to be paid back, and I know all this stuff. But there's ways that we can go about getting this equipment that don't have to come right out of the budget and spend frivolously. There's no reason to just throw money out at everything. And I have, I've not seen that in our school system. And from what I understand, the new elementary school here in Chipley will have a lot of updated equipment. And I'm excited to see how that equipment's going to work. I've not got to see that yet. And I know as a child, when new things came out, I remember when computers and they'd done away with the typewriters and stuff. When we got our first computer, and I remember us typing in programs on it, and it captivated me, just the same way these kids get captivated with new equipment also. It gives them a will to want to learn. And I don't want to just spend frivolously on this type of equipment, but find avenues that we can go down to get this supplied to us.
Have you not had the opportunity to tour the new KMS yet?
I have not yet.
Superintendent of Schools in Washington County, Joe Taylor, belongs to the Kiwanis Club, of which I'm a member.
Yes, sir.
And the first Tuesday in April, or I beg your pardon, the first Tuesday in May, he's going to take the entire Kiwanis Club on a tour. We're going to actually have lunch at the new KMS cafeteria, and we're going to take a tour. Let me invite you to be my guest on that day. I'll shoot you an email and remind you of the date. It might be a good opportunity for you to be able to see that.
I would love to.
When we talk about lack of funding and having to jump through the state's hoops when we accept that state funding, many things are, don't fall under that jumping through hoops, they're just simply the way it has to be done.
That's right.
One thing that's mandated now, pretty much nationwide, is online testing. In order to test online, you have to have bandwidth, you have to have computer accessibility. I know that in Washington County, we're trying to go one-to-one student to device so that every student can be online to do that testing. One of the reasons cited for that referendum question about the half-cent sales tax was to be able to increase our bandwidth and to be able to afford some of that. When you get the opportunity to tour Kate Smith, when you walk on the mezzanine, which is the upper level above, above all the classrooms where all the utilities run, there are bundles as big around as I can hold, full of Cat 5 internet cable. It's completely wired. That takes care of the physical part of it. That was all included in the cost of the building. But we're still going to have to afford the bandwidth to be able to do this online testing. Again, we're going to be faced with some challenges, probably some of which we've never been faced with before, simply because we have not had these needs before. Always had a need for money. The purpose of that money is what varies. In your case, as a new school board member, you're going to be faced with some of that. Now, we're looking at the fact that we need more money, but there's no option. It's not a matter of saying no to the state, and the only way you can take those tests, if you're proud of being a B school, the only way to keep up that is to allow testing. First blush response to that, what do you feel our options will be? I dare say that that expense is going to outcompense what we can do with bake sales and car washes.
Yes, sir. And we're limited on our resources of where we're going to get our internet from, being in a rural area, like you can just pick and choose. So there's going to be times we have to eat it and we have to take what we got. But when we do it as an investment to our children, what is the price tag you put on an investment to that child's education? They're the future of this county. Many of my friends that I graduated with has come back here and they've come put their business into this community. And that's what we're looking for today. We educate these young people, let them go out, get their education from the college level and stuff like that, watch them come back and watch them thrive in this community. That's where we need to be at. We can't always put a price tag on what it costs to do that. I know my five-year-old is doing this iReady. I've got to have a computer at home to be able to do the iReady, and he works on that. Well, I go to talk to his teacher, she's got two computers and she's got like 16, 18 children. You can't get them all on the computers at the same time. So you have to, and she has to juggle between the two of them, the rest of the children and the two on the iReady. And you know, every child's got questions the whole time that they're doing anything. So we cannot put a price tag on supplying the needs of our children. But at the same time, we're going to have to do it smart. You know, you got to put three bids out there, find out who's got the cheapest. We just have to do what we got to do for that level. And that's tough, but we can do that.
I think we could agree that there are going to be challenges.
There will.
And it's going to take that five-member board plus the superintendent in that spirit of cooperation and partnership and teamwork to be able to accomplish those goals. Enough of the doom and gloom. Let's talk about the good stuff. What do you feel is going to be one of the more rewarding parts of being a school board member in Washington County?
The kids, getting to work with these children. I look forward to being able to walk on campus, talk to kids, mentor kids, tell them stories of where I was at in school, and listen to their stories of where they're at, and just be an example to them. That is the most rewarding thing to me. I want to go talk to the teachers. I want to go talk to the bus drivers and the cafeteria workers. I want to get to know them on a more intimate level, and I want to understand what feeds them, what their needs are. And, you know, I'm one voice. I would be one voice. And we also are held captive by what the state allows. But I would love to be a voice for our educators. And when I say educator, I mean the school bus driver, I mean the mechanics at the school barn, I mean the cafeteria workers and every facet of what makes this school work together. I would love the opportunity to be their voice. I would love the opportunity to talk with these children and find out what they want. And I have talked to some, and they want exceptional learning programs, and they want, they want to be challenged, is what I found, some of them. And it's hard to do sometimes with the amount of kids we got now.
I appreciate you taking the time out of your busy schedule to be here today. Is there anything that you'd like to add, anything maybe that I haven't asked, anything that's on your mind today?
Yes, sir. One of the things that's been brought up to me the most since I've started is the Common Core. And in the form it's in now, I don't agree with the Common Core. It shouldn't determine whether a kid passes or fails. I agree with the fact, like you do in finals in college or midterms. It may be a weighted test, but for it to determine whether you pass or fail shouldn't be an option. Whether it gives the teachers raises or not, that shouldn't be an option. We do have to grade our school system. We have to see where we line up. Are we doing what we need to, for our children, to be able to provide their needs later in life? So in the form it's in now, I don't agree with Common Core, and I will fight against it. I will write to legislators, I will write to governors, I will call, I will do anything in my power to get it changed from the form it's in now. It should not determine whether our children pass or fail a grade. When we've got great students that make all As and just because they have test anxieties, they fail, and they fail the whole grade. It's not fair to them children.
Is there anything else that you'd add?
No, sir. I think that's got it.
Again, I appreciate your time today. I'm going to give you the opportunity to look right into the lens, speak right to our viewers, and tell them why they should vote for Travis Mask for Washington County School Board District 2.
Yes, sir. I appreciate the opportunity that Mr. Gould has given to me to be here today, and I ask for your vote come August 30th. I look- I look forward to working with these young people. I look forward to working with our educators on every facet of what makes this community thrive and makes this school system what it is. And I ask for you to allow me the opportunity to go to work for you in the community. Because I will be your voice to this school board. I will be those children's voice and our educators' voice to this school board. I'm not a hireling. I don't allow people to tell me which way I need to go or what I need to do. I have values. And if I compromise my values, I would not be who I am today. I thank you for your vote. And I ask you, pray for your school system and pray for your administrators.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Best of luck going forward.
Yes, sir.
Our guest today has been Travis Mask. He's currently running for Washington County School Board Member District Two. That position, if you recall, is currently held by Wayne Saunders, longtime school board member, who has decided not to run this next election cycle. Travis has come out for this position. This has been another in our series of Meet the Candidates, our opportunity or our offering to you to help you become educated, to become informed as a voter. We ask you to register to vote, to exercise your constitutional right and privilege to vote, but so often, we expect you to do so without being informed and educated. It's important to us that you do your due diligence, that you do your homework, learn who these candidates are, get to meet them if possible. If not, we are allowing you virtually to meet, in this case Travis, and decide exactly why, and sometimes why you should not vote for that respective candidate. We'll be right back.
Thanks for watching Real Florida Magazine. We'll be right back with more.